All right, let's call this meeting to order at 6:32. Let's rise for the couple of agents.
I truly wish to play the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call?
Craig here.
Cummings here.
Harris here.
Harvey.
Okay, we're missing Jeremy, and Suzanne, and now. So the verification of notices, posting of proper meeting notices. And are there any changes to the agenda that we know of?
Um, we reposed an agenda with the stay linked, but we can follow.
Okay, perfect. All right, I am looking for a motion to approve the agenda, is posted.
We'll make a motion to approve the agenda as posted.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Post 201, okay, moving right along. And now we got the promo for the bills and vouchers. And I would love to entertain a motion for the, all three of them.
I also move to approve all three vouchers for approval.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That's a roll call vote.
Just joking, roll call vote.
Craig, yes.
Craig, yes.
Harris, yes.
Harvey, yes.
Thanks, Bill.
In front of you.
I, um, actually, okay, so no one opposed, it was a 4-0 vote.
It's because I can read.
Okay, perfect, cool, thank you. All right, and any announcements that anyone would like to?
I have an announcement, a week ago, today, I attended a program put on by the Wisconsin Education Association, Department of Education at Wisconsin Dallas, Waterloo was one of the features. It was put on by Scott Carr, who is our workforce development coordinator through CSUP. And we had a student, Mr. Bartelt, and myself, as well as Sean, on a panel for about 15 to 20 minutes. And even though we follow a bunch, I thought we had a great, uh, we had a positive impact on those attending. Probably about 40 people there in attendance. And we were told how we coordinated with the eighth, with the junior high students, as well as some of the senior high students on a design project, which I proposed, and Scott Carr wrote it up into a request for proposal. And the students followed through to one degree or the other. But this is really an effort being made by our school and schools throughout the country to help create our student engagement in projects rather than teachers playing all teaching the way they would normally. So, I was very pleased to be there.
Anyone else have any other announcements? Any public input? No? No? Okay, anyone online? Okay, moving right along to new business. Uh, the first action item is staff positions. As posted, we have one for the softball head coach, and then a resignation. Does anyone have any questions in regards to either one of those?
Yeah, I thought the explanation was put out very clearly by Brad Lopez, stating they wanted to get into virtual education, and they had an opportunity, so I think their letter expressed appreciation and a change to the brogiers, so I'd like to take it at face value, so it was good.
So I am just looking for a motion to approve these staff positions.
So move.
I'll say.
Okay, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, I'm standing.
Okay, that would be 301 vote. There you go, okay, moving right along. Uh, action item B, reduction in third grade teaching staff. Holly, do you want to talk to this?
Yep, thank you. I would, I know, I know what the recommendation that, that Brian made, and I love that you asked me. Um, I would like to talk a little bit, we've been working really hard over the last three years to really keep our class sizes down. So I had to write it down, here's mine. Here is, here's what I'd like to talk a little bit about. Lower, um, class sizes in pre-K4, in the pre-K4 setting, offer significant benefits, including increased individualized attention for students, improved academic performance, and a more positive learning environment. Smaller class sizes allow teachers to better understand each student's learning style and needs, leading to more effective instruction and engagement. And additionally, smaller classes can result in better student behavior, reduce disciplinary issues, and higher teacher morale. Here's more detailed look on the benefits and the successes that we've had here in Waterloo so far in these last three years. So we've increased the individualized attention, targeted instruction. Teachers in smaller classes can provide more focused instruction tailored to individual student needs and learning styles. 16 students per class is ideal. When it starts to creep up into the twenties, my teachers get agitated. So as we start to increase that number of students, it is harder to provide tailored instruction. Our elementary enrollment for this year is 272. This will, will create an 18 to 1 student teacher ratio in all of the elementary as we think about students versus FTE staff. Eliminating another FTE from our school will raise that ratio. Currently, there are 16 students, 15, 16 students in the third grade classrooms. Eliminating a teacher will increase their class sizes by seven each, giving them a classroom size of 22 and 23. Now that, you know, that's, that's seven more bodies, that's seven more conferences, that's seven more, it's not, elementary teachers don't get kids for one hour, 23 kids, and then the next hour it might be 10, or it might be 12. They're, in their all day, all subject degrees. Early intervention. Smaller class sizes allow teachers to identify and address learning challenges early on, preventing them from becoming major obstacles. With the addition of Act 20, students are required to have reading plans. We want to be proactive and create classroom environments where students have a better chance of not needing those plans. Deeper engagement. Students in smaller classes are more likely to participate actively, ask questions and engage in discussions, leading to more enriching learning experiences. Increasing student achievement. Engagement is key to increasing achievement and creating life-ready citizens. A support for diverse learners. Smaller class sizes can be particularly beneficial for students with special needs, English language learners and students with diabetes. This particular grade level has a diverse student population and the highest number of students with identified needs, and will benefit greatly from smaller class sizes. It will improve academic performance. Higher test scores. Studies consistently show a correlation between smaller class sizes and improved student performance in standardized tests. For the first time in a long time, we have over 50% of our fourth grade students at or above that proficient level. It reduces that achievement gap. Lower class sizes can be particularly beneficial for students from disadvantaged backgrounds, helping to close the achievement gaps. It enhances the learning environment. It reduces disruptions. Smaller class sizes tend to be calmer and more focused with fewer distractions and behavioral issues. Over the last three years that I've been here, the amount of behavior referrals have gone from 125 in 23-24 to 467 in 23-24, down to 204 this last school year. I would attribute this work to the work that we have been doing, keeping our class sizes small at around 16, and the relationships that teachers have built with students and families. Stronger student teacher relationships. We think this is really important, and we've, I've worked really hard to create school-family relationships. The increased interaction between students and teachers in smaller class sizes fosters more positive and supportive learning environments. They're making more phone calls, they're having longer PTA, or PT conferences. And it's just good PR for the Waterloo community and the school. We have low class sizes. It increases student motivation. Students in smaller classes are often motivated and engaged in a learning environment, leading to a more positive attitude towards learning. And of course, improving teacher retention. Smaller class sizes can lead to higher teacher morale and job satisfaction, potentially reducing teacher turnover. In the end, keeping our class sizes small is one of the best things we can do for our students and our community. We've already seen the difference here in Waterloo, from better test scores to fewer behavior issues and stronger connections between teachers, students, and families. Even though budgets are tight, it's important that we don't lose sight of what's working. Keeping the current staff to student ratio in place helps us give kids the attention and support they need to succeed. I understand the idea of natural attrition. There have been new hires in all of the buildings for this coming school year. The elementary school should not have to shoulder the burden of budget restraints just because of the timing of my staff leaving. The elementary school already made a sacrifice by reducing to two classrooms in fourth grade, and by not, by not rehiring the existing first grade teacher. I was able to use some creative existing staff to provide a more tailored instructional time and environment for math and reading in that fourth grade setting, but I can't do it for the third grade. We need a third, we need three classrooms for third grade. We need to keep class sizes optimal at the elementary level and taking another up to you from elementary is not optimal. It is not always easy, but doing what's best for students should always come first. So I just wanted to give you my rationale and my opinion about that reduction. I know you have to make your decision, but I had to champion for my staff and my school.
So are you saying the last three years in 22, 23, 23, 24, and then 24, 25, we've had the 16 to 17?
Yes.
Range, yes.
And next year I'll have, I got the second grade group of 16 and 17 coming up for next year. So it's not just this year, it's next year as well. There is that one class, but even those first graders, every day we get more students here in Waterloo, and we're happy to have them, and even those first grade classrooms are climbing to, to the twenties. And, you know, that's when teachers are like, oh, that's a whole other table, it's a whole, it's just, I understand that you have decisions to make, but I just wanted to give you my two cents. So I appreciate you listening, I appreciate your assumption.
Thank you. So Holly, will you then, this is the first grade, the kids that are going into first grade have, they're smaller, right?
The, my current first grade have just two sections right now, and they're up around 20 at this point.
Okay, so then?
But the others all have three sections.
Okay.
Well, except for not fourth grade.
Yeah.
They've already, yeah.
Okay.
Scott?
Yeah, so what are you guys thinking?
Um, I'd almost like to have the budget discussion. Are there any significant changes in the budget that would add funds that we aren't considering? Given what, what's in our software.
I mean, with the updates in there, um, that's why we're doing an updated preliminary budget in there. Did you guys look at that?
Mm-hmm.
Um, so those numbers, it's, it's more, more negative than the last time. So that's why we've been wanting to put it in there, as to what is, um, grabbing the paper.
So just briefly, in the, in the agenda here, we've got, we're currently projecting a $240,000 budget deficit, deficit budget for this upcoming school year. Not replacing the third grade position would save around 90 to 100,000 of that money. What you're telling me is, the update that we've gotten makes that 240 worse or better?
Better, um, right now it includes that position, so that would get better if we do this again.
Oh, I see, it's, it's going under the assumption that we didn't?
Right, at this point.
And that's, that's the, that's the major change that would happen, and I see, I got you.
Yep, yep, because we had, they put out the new open enroll out in amounts for students. That means things, especially that they finally released the flow-through in Title I amounts. Through here, July 1st paid estimate, updated. Both of them have been named in one standard. Yeah, so that's why we wanted to give you what the budget was now, so you can see and make a decision on that.
So here would be my preference, that this issue, we don't have to approve the replacement, we don't have to state that we're not going to replace necessarily this.
But then we sit until September, and then that start of school, and so, yeah, it really does.
So you're saying we'd have to?
We would have to, because that's classroom sizes, that's classes, that's everything. So then Holly would have to get on there and make the decision of, get a teacher.
We'll figure it out in three weeks.
Yeah, which would be very fast. Okay.
Do you think you could hire a teacher in three weeks?
I can, yep, I can hire a teacher next week. I already have 10, I was able to post it when, a, a week ago, when she took a virtual job, she came to talk with me, and I was able to post it, I do have 10 candidates, I have people calling me wondering, you know, absolutely get someone hired before, before the end of next week. I'm not.
Because then the other thing, on the other side of this, is that we did, we need two classrooms, and then we give them 23 to 25 kids, so it's gonna have to be a couple teachers.
We're doing the education. Here's the problem that I have, was sort of the government had that idea. Right now, I'm basing my decision on a bunch of information that I technically don't have. I don't know what a reasonable class size is. I know that it's better to have a smaller class than a larger class. I don't know what the competitive schools in the district have. I don't know what other teachers have in other districts that they have to compete with. Um, I don't have any reliable data on that whatsoever.
Right.
These are all questions that I hope that Brian can answer, who's not here. So, not to mention, there's also the issue of, just what you brought up, that I don't, is it reasonable to be taking this from the elementary school as opposed to say the high school, or the middle school, or, or whatnot? Those are, those are reasonable arguments, man, but I don't, I haven't heard from those people. My guess is they aren't prepared to ever make a statement about it. So all I'm saying is, there's a lot to consider here when you're spending $100,000 on a budget that's upside down by 250, and this is...
I thought it was already upside down by 250 before we lost the teacher.
Well, I understand that, but at some point, we're gonna have to make up that deficit by eliminating an existing position that didn't voluntarily leave, and that is a whole other issue altogether.
Yeah, and I understand that too. I, I mean, just looking at the numbers that she gave, you know, the 25 to 204, it is really truly about education. So am I willing to say that's worth 90 to 100,000 dollars is kids' education? Because that's what it's gonna come down to, that's what's gonna suffer, and then our teachers are gonna suffer, so.
That's an indecisive decision.
No.
I've been in a classroom with younger kids, because that's my age, it's boys, and small class, I see them, I have to work together, there's not a lot of disruption, I agree with the principal.
Yeah, my, my daughter is in first grade, and she's the one that has the two classes. I gotta be honest, like, yeah, it would probably be very hard for 23 to 25. And like she stated in here, is that strong student relationships with families. We were very close to the teacher just because of the communication. Probably wouldn't have that if you had seven or eight more kids in a class, so.
Bill, I've been a classroom teacher for 30 years, and, um, I've taught more than 23 kids in a classroom, and I've taught less than that. And I'm gonna tell you when it starts to feel like, when, when it starts to creep over 20, it's hard. It's, it, it does make it harder to create, to keep those connections, to build those relationships with kids, and to really make sure that you're tailoring, and otherwise you're just, you're just, whoa. And it's, it's, in elementary, I'm not sure this is the place to make best cut, because we don't, we don't get like, we get them, we get them all day, they're in our classroom all day, we're responsible for everything they do. It's not like it's just one 45-minute period, and we can, oh, next hour I only have 10, woo, you know? That's not, it's not the case with elementary. We have them all day, and we are responsible for when they go to the bathroom, and, and what we're teaching, all the time. It's, it's, it's the nature of the beast.
Is there a possibility to move a teacher from one of the other grade levels into the elementary?
It is not.
Because?
Oh, from, like, I don't, I mean, that's a different building to move, like, somebody from. I don't, I can't, I don't have any.
That's going from middle school or high school, they would have to, that would be, have to be something that...
It's usually a different licensure, so it's, it's not, I can't, just like, I don't think that one.
Tragically, whenever I hear from folks, they're concerned about the budget. And yet, we know, we're here to be representing students. I know if, uh, this is one we probably hear either way from, but.
We're in the hole for $250,000, that's depending on where it's supposed to be. Need a teacher.
I'll make it.
You can make a motion.
Okay, I'll make the motion to not have the reduction. I mean, I don't want to have the reduction in the third grade teaching staff.
Basically, go through with the replacement.
Yeah, I would like to go through with keeping the, um, a replacement for the third grade, and looking in our budget to see where we can save elsewhere. So Cummings makes the motion, and your his?
Seconds.
Seconds, all those in favor?
Aye.
Sorry.
Opposed.
So then?
I'm opposed.
So then?
He's opposed.
So it's a tie?
So then, wait, what happens then?
Motion to motionably take without a break.
Okay, so we have to table it?
That's a bummer.
I know.
Or talk more about it, make a decision.
Yeah, we have to make a decision. Right.
We need to make a decision tonight. That, that, I, I reject the premise of that, because, yes, it's gonna be harder to find somebody.
No, it's not even that, it's the classrooms, it's getting the classrooms set up.
Our next, our next board meeting is September 12.
Well, I'm worried that, you're telling me that they can't get classrooms set up in time, like, they literally, they can't move the desks?
That's, no, it's not even that, it's everything, it's Skyward, it's getting them set up, it's buses, it's, it's everything that goes into getting a...
None of that can be changed in a term.
Um, you talk to Sarah Duffey and ask her, because I don't want to show any more job. It's just a lot of work, it's a lot of extra work. That's all I'm saying, is like, uh, we either A, make the decision, or two, when is our meeting in, in August?
24.
We, we could, we could put it on the 24th.
I mean, I, anything is possible, but it would definitely be more difficult.
Yeah.
And the candidate pool would be less, but.
What?
And the candidate pool would be less, but definitely a choice.
That's like, not even a week before school.
I don't like it either.
So what is your, uh, decision on not voting for it, what would be?
Was my rationale behind it?
Yeah.
There has to, we're being irresponsible right now. There needs to be a cut someplace. And right now, I don't sense enough support in the community for a referendum, not to mention the fact that we don't even have a referential pending. So at some point, you need to have the number squared. And I haven't seen any serious consideration up to where this money is going to come from, other than what's been proposed, I assume by Brian in his recommendation on this. The only thing that I've seen so far. And because he's the closest one to this in a position of administration, that's, that, that is pretty to fault it. This is interesting.
Okay, Jeremy, I'm really glad you walked in. Because we're gonna, we're gonna make you up this.
We are gonna make a decision, Patrick.
We have to make a decision, uh, tonight.
This feeling.
Um, so I will, I will catch you up.
Why don't you let her get her spiel with him now, too, because he wasn't here. I'd be, I'd be in paper.
Are you saying?
I think you should be allowed to make a pitch.
I hate to pitch it.
Are you?
I'll pitch with you, yep, so.
Thank you, sorry.
So, hey, Jeremy, welcome.
So we're talking about my third grade teacher, who, um, who has, who left last week. And we're asking, or we're talking about reducing to down to three, right?
I read that.
So then I, I am proposing that we need to keep our lower class sizes that we have here in Waterloo. So, lower class sizes, I'm gonna do the whole thing again, are you ready? So, lower class sizes in pre-K4 setting offer significant benefits, including increased individualized attention for students, improved academic performance, and a more positive learning environment. Smaller class sizes allow teachers to better understand each student's learning style and needs, leading to more effective instruction and engagement. Additionally, small classes can result in better student behavior, reduce disciplinary issues, and higher teacher morale. Here's more detailed look on the benefits and success that we've been making during Waterloo. Increased individual attention, targeted instruction. Teachers in smaller classes can provide more focused instruction tailored to individual students and learning styles. 16 students per classroom is ideal. As we move to increase the number of students in classroom, in, in a classroom, the harder we can to provide that tailored instruction. Our elementary enrollment for next year is 272. This will create an 18 to 1 teacher to student ratio in the elementary building. Eliminating another FTE from the school will raise the ratio. Currently, there are 16 students, 15, 16 students in each of the third grade classrooms. Eliminating a teacher will increase their class sizes by seven each, giving them a classroom size of 22 or 23. Early intervention. Smaller class sizes allow teachers to identify and address learning challenges early on, preventing them from becoming major obstacles. With the addition of Act 20, students are required to have reading plans. We want to be proactive and create classroom environments where students have a better chance of not needing a reading plan. Deeper engagement. Students in smaller classes are more likely to participate actively, ask questions and engage in discussions, leading to a more enriching learning experience. Increasing student engagement is key to increasing achievement and creating life-ready citizens. It's a support for diverse learners. Smaller class sizes can be particularly beneficial for students with special needs, English language learners and students with diabetes. This particular grade level has a diverse student population and the highest number of students who have identified needs that will benefit greatly from smaller class sizes. It improves active better performance. Higher test scores. Studies consistently show a correlation between smaller class sizes and improved student performance on standardized tests. For the first time in a long time, we have, we have over 50% of our fourth grade students at or above the proficient learning level. Reduce the achievement gap. Lower class sizes can be particularly beneficial for students from disadvantaged backgrounds, helping to close achievement gaps. It enriches the learning environment and reduce disruptions. Smaller class sizes tend to be calmer and more focused with fewer distractions and behavioral issues. Over the last three years, the amount of behavior referrals has gone from 85 in 23 to 467 in 23-24, to this year, 204. I would attribute this to the work we've been doing in our, keeping our class sizes around 16, and building those relationships that teachers have with their students and families. Stronger student teacher relationships and teacher and family relationships. The increased interaction between students and teachers in smaller class sizes fosters a more positive and supportive learning environment.
It's about phone calls home, they have time to make more phone calls, longer parent teacher conferences. It's just good for the Waterloo community and the school. We have low class sizes here, it brings people to our school, it's, it's a selling point. It increases student motivation. Students in smaller classes are often more motivated and engaged in their learning, leading to a more positive attitude toward school. Improve teacher retention. Smaller class sizes can lead to higher teacher morale and job satisfaction, potentially reducing teacher turnover. In the end, keeping our class sizes small is one of the best things we can do for our students and our community. We've already seen the difference here in Waterloo, for better test scores to view behavior issues and stronger connections between teachers, students, and families. Even though budgets are tight, it's important that we don't lose sight of the cookie. Keeping the current staff-student ratio in place helps us give kids the attention and support they need to succeed. I understand the, the idea of natural attrition. There have been new hires in all the buildings for this coming school year. The elementary should not have to shoulder, shoulder the burden of budget restraints just because of the timing of my staff leaving. The elementary school already made a sacrifice by reducing to two classrooms in fourth grade by not rehiring an existing first grade teacher. I was able to use some existing staff to provide a more tailored instructional environment in that area. But we need more, I need three classrooms in third grade. I don't have any more people to move around or to work with. We need to keep class sizes optimal at the elementary level. And taking another FTE from the elementary is not optimal. It's not always easy, but to do what's best for students should come first. And like I said, I understand you guys have a hard decision to make and budgets are tight. But I have to champion for my students, my teachers, and my students, just what I believe as an educator. So, never to my spiel that I gave earlier and I'm happy to do it again, Jeremy. And now you're sort of up to speed. So.
Send you?
I did put a motion on the floor, I seconded it, and then they said no. So it was zero, or it was two, two.
Two, two.
Um, I guess that, that means it failed, but you can make a motion to reconsider motion earlier, so.
Okay, so then I have to.
I'll make a motion.
Wait, hold on, hold on, one second. Do you have any questions, Jeremy, about this?
No, I read up on it and now I've got the spiel.
Okay, got it, okay, so what would you like to do?
I'll make a motion to reconsider the, uh, vote again, or the basically agenda item.
Okay, so are you making the motion?
Yes.
To.
Making the motion to reconsider, not necessarily to.
Okay, so then Cummings will make.
That's what we needed to do, right?
Yeah.
Um, yes, I believe you wanna say like, um, I do want, I have a question. I would think you say reconsider it and then what you want to do.
Yeah.
So you're voting on something.
Oh, okay, that will, in that case, you do actually, you do the reconsideration because you're the ones that.
Okay, okay, so Cummings, do reconsider to have the third grade teaching staff not removed? Keep it with three teachers.
Basically, you wanna have refilled.
Yes, so Cummings will make that motion. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes, I'm still.
Okay, so it was a three-two vote. It passed, we are keeping the third grade position, so you can go ahead and fill it.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, all right, moving on.
Try to push on the oxygen. No.
Sorry, Jeremy.
I, I coached that age, the most I could handle myself is thirteen, I, you wanna go to twenty-two, twenty-three?
Sometimes twenty-four and twenty-five.
That scares me.
Yeah, okay, um, so now we are action item C, teacher leadership positions. Does anyone have any questions in regards to the positions that we're posting? If not, I'm just looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the teacher leadership position.
Yurkis makes a motion to appro- uh, approve. Farley, seconds, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion approved, five oh vote. Okay, moving on, um, action item E, overloads and advanced placement, nope, just joking. Twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, other co-curricular positions. Anyone have any questions in regards to those?
I'll make a motion to approve twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six co-curricular positions. Second.
Oh.
He's got it.
He's got it? Okay, open for second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, five oh vote, are you ready now? Thank you, okay, I'm not gonna say it then. All right, moving on, we are on action E, overloads and advanced placement assignments. Do we have any questions regarding the overloads and advanced placement assignments? Okay, I'm just looking for a motion.
I'll make that motion to approve overloads and advanced placement assignments. Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion approved, five oh, we are moving right along now. Action, um, F, long-term and short-term disability. Are there any questions regarding the long-term or short-term disability?
Yeah, I have a question for, uh, Suzie, is Brown and Brown out now on this renewal? If we go with the, uh, proposal Reliance Matrix? Or is Brown and Brown bringing to us Reliance Matrix?
Um, I don't quite get you, Brown and Brown went too big for us because they're our insurance brokers.
Yeah.
Um, and then after like several different meetings, um, this one met our needs and I believe the long-term disability was the same as last year for, is that what you're asking?
No.
I don't quite get, I'm sorry.
I, I think he, he made sure Brown and Brown was working for us to find us our insurance carrier and our insurance carrier that Brown and Brown found was Reliance Matrix.
Brown and Brown worked for us.
Yeah.
Yes, okay. I thought Brown and Brown was not able to deliver and Reliance Matrix was knocking on your door waiting for them to scuffle.
The standard wasn't able to get us what we needed.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, but Brown and Brown also represents the standard.
They work for them.
Oh.
Yeah, Brown and Brown represents us, they work for us to go get the bids. Um, but we had something special with the standard through our last broker and they were able to like keep that for a little bit, now they're not willing to give us the same plan that we had before because I think it, don't, I, they're not as preferred insurance broker that they worked through.
All right.
So the standard wasn't willing to do the same thing, so that's probably the hard reason why we switched companies.
Okay.
Does anyone else have any other questions?
No.
Okay.
I will, I will move to approve long-term and short-term disability with Reliance Matrix. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
That's a three-five oh vote. Right on to student handbooks, all the information is in our packet. Is there any questions? Did principals have given the suggested changes? Are there any questions?
That was a lot of pages, was the main thing just the change in the cell phone policy?
Uh, for which one? For all of them? Probably not the elementary, are you talking about the middle school or?
I guess I focused on the high school one, to be honest.
Sean, can you speak to that?
Yeah, the, uh, can you hear me okay?
Yep.
The, uh, it's just more an updated change to it, um, we've had students in the past, um, when they sign out of classrooms, go on their phones right away, so the expectation is that it's not happening. They need to turn them in along with AirPods, just right away to start this year. So it's a little more of an update, we've been similar, but we are getting a little more strict on that since doing our book study of the anxious generative. Kind of guided our work to, to move in that direction more.
Thanks, Sean.
Any other questions regarding student books?
Also move for approval.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? One, so five oh vote. All right, moving along to the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget. There's a lot, yes. So we have our annual meeting and when is our annual meeting in September? Is, uh, twenty, is it twenty-second?
September twenty-second.
Okay, okay, and so it's gonna come back in September first, September tenth meeting? Is it gonna come again before then or no?
Um, you know.
Any other updates?
We'll have it, final update will be after the, um, October fifteenth, um, we did tax probably on October twenty-seventh, that's when we didn't have our final, because that'll be like the final, final one. We don't have all our data yet. We're like, um, it's just a, um, an updated one because some of that information came like right when I was turning in the budget last month, I was on vacation, so this is more up to date with that, more recent stuff that I kinda highlighted in that memo.
Okay.
So if we're gonna approve this as submitted as a preliminary budget, the one change that we'll have to make is adding back in the third grade teacher.
It was in there.
I believe that, I believe that was in there, yeah.
It was in there.
I didn't take that one out, yeah.
We didn't take it out, yeah.
Of course.
Yeah.
Okay, does anyone else have any other questions?
I will move to approve the twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-six preliminary budget. Now, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, it's approved as a five oh vote. Is there any future agenda items that you would like to have on the next board meeting? No, no, Bill? No, okay, all right.
Not yet.
Yeah, no, you're good.
Okay. I'm just gonna, just like, I'm a whole list here.
All right, who seconded, sorry.
I did.
You did, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five oh vote, have a great night, everyone.
Thanks for coming, everyone.
Yeah.